All in perspective.
All in perspective, amen.
The time said, uh, well, how, are you sure we got to have the meetings? What if the rapture was to occur? He said, y'all just go ahead. And he said, I won't be there, but he said, y'all.
Kyle, this meeting of the Jefferson County Planning Commission, uh, to order. Uh, Mr. Terry Reno, if you would, open this prayer, please.
Would please. Father, we're so thankful for the blessings you've bestowed upon us here that we live in this country that we live in, especially Jefferson County. We ask that you continue to bless us and let us prosper as we grow, as we put you first and foremost, and let you lead and guide us in all that we do. We ask you to continue to be those that may have had illness and those that may have lost loved ones, that you can be with them and give them comfort on as long as you can. But most of all, we thank you for your son and the gift that he gave us. Amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We definitely have a quorum here tonight, so when I trust that you've received your packets and had a opportunity to look at your minutes, do we have any corrections to those? You have a top of motion, have a second, although in favor, that'd be number same eye.
Aye.
Although opposed, motion passes. Uh, citizens input. I have a list here, and I want to say this before we get started. Item A has been stricken from the agenda, and then if we go down and look at the item D, the discussion of the rock quarry, and I think that's what some of the citizens inputs about. Since that decision has been challenged, that has turned into a legal matter. So, we will not comment in any way, form, or fashion on that tonight. It is on, it is going to be on the agenda for the March meeting.
BZA.
Uh, BZA, but we can't talk about it at all tonight. It is a legal matter. If you're here and you still won't speak, you're going to have the opportunity to step to the podium and speak, you just won't get any interaction from us about that. Okay?
We can speak about it, but you all will not respond.
Correct, sir. Yes, sir. And we can, we can have that discussion next month on that. That being said, we'll move into the citizens input, and the first person I have on the paper is Pamela Meadows. Okay, if you come to the podium, state your name and address, please.
My name is Pam Meadows. I live at eleven twenty-two West Dunlop Valley Road, Danridge. I live in Piedmont. I'm here speaking for my neighbor who lives down the road on Lafayette Road, Linda Gray, and this is her letter to the members of the Planning Commission and citizens. Some smaller communities in our county are feeling ignored and overrun by our commission and especially the county planning board. I propose a zone regulation for hazardous materials or dangerous practicing places to be zoned hazardous. Examples would be the best lithium ion battery facility to be, excuse me, a hundred miles from cities or national parks. That was almost passed without proper disclosure. Many people who live within a mile had never heard anything about it, myself included. I am bed bound and right down the road from that site. If that had happened and they had had an emergency, I would have been in enormous trouble. An accident would here have caused post-toxic emission and fire hazard that would call for the evacuation of everything in a fifty mile radius, which would include Knoxville, Seville, Sevierville, the Pigeon Forge, Gatlinburg, and the Smoky National Park. No way. Our ancestors did not clean cane breaks and brambles to have the land destroyed like that. Also, within a mile of here, they pushed through a rock quarry that should not have passed. Blasting is affecting foundations in the area. The dust is a health hazard, especially to our kids and grandkids that are right across the road from it, and the noise at all hours. Some people have been talking about hiring their own lawyers to protect themselves and their property from the government meant to represent them. We object that we are outwroing our infrastructure and will be asked to pay for upgrades to schools, waters, and roads that will not be cost effective. I propose a different class, tax class for those of us who have supported our area for generations, rather than carpetbaggers sweeping in to take advantage of what we have built. I have also challenged the planning committee and the county commissioners to publicize their meetings and the agenda, along with a list of committee and commissioners with contact information in time for their constituents to express their views. Also, for the members to consult their legal advisors, and for members to elect a parliamentarian and secretary to take detailed meeting minutes. In other words, know what the people want and what they can do. Get their act together before taking their show on the road. It's not cool to act on items that don't reflect their people's view or that they can't legally vote on. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. And I failed to mention before she spoke, if you would please, limit your time at the podium to three minutes or less. That way, everybody has the opportunity to, to say what they want to say. Next will be Brian Asbury. Is he here? It's just Brian is his first name, it's how he wrote it. Brian Michael Asbury.
Brian Michael, you can call me Mike. Or Brian. There's more other names that John Neil won't pursue me to say in here. Uh, well, I'm, you know, I didn't know about the quarry being canceled tonight, so... What I was going to say is, is the, they've started, they started out with about forty-nine acres over there, and now they're, then they got up to a hundred and sixteen, and I believe they've added another ten here in the last week, couple of weeks, because they've started working on a, a plot of land there on French Mill Road, and it's another plot. It's not where they had the, the original drive that came out back, on the backside where the big antenna is, but it's, it's up there just a couple up from the, I believe it's a lead veteran's property. And so, I guess what I'm kind of really getting concerned about now is, is how much property they're going to keep acquiring, because they're right, every time, you know, they're right next to somebody with all this noise and beating and banging and stuff, and so these, some people can't tolerate this stuff, so they're going to start selling their property. So, are they going to be able to keep expanding by bringing in there, making noise and banging and beating and banging, and then your property, people get tired, they want to get out, so their property's cheap, and so they buy that and keep it expanding? And that's what I'm kind of concerned about. And the other thing is, is this comes back to rezoning and whatnot, is, you know, I think Jefferson County's become an easy mark for these people that come in here and buy property and do whatever they want, but there's nothing to stop them. So, that's, I want you all to keep that in consideration about how to slow some of this stuff down, about the people that's doing what they want willy-nilly around the county.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Uh, if you would, they need to put that, if they, on the record, they need their address, name and address.
Yes, name and address, sorry.
So, it goes in the recording.
Yes. I do have the address here on the paper, and I can state that it's eleven twenty-two West Dunlop Valley Road, is that correct? Okay. Next will be Annette Loy. Is Ms. Loy here? Thank you. Y'all.
My name is Annette Loy. I live at twelve feet. You aren't very interested in this. I beg you, pay attention to this. This is what the citizens of this county are saying to you, and from the outside looking in, it seems that you're ignoring it. Second observation, I've been coming to these meetings for years. The last two years, there's been an item on your agenda. At the bottom of the agenda, it says that you're to discuss land use and rezoning. That's been on there for over two years. I've not seen or heard anything that's been done on that issue. So, I can only conclude that you're either unwilling or unable to do it. That was requested by the county commission. This was requested by first the county mayor and then the county commission. If you people cannot or will not listen to this, then you need to step aside and let somebody else have a try. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Loy.
Tina Ball. Is Ball here?
I'm here. Tina Ball, close sixty-one tower twenty-five seventy, Danridge, you see. You know, I agree with Ms. Loy. You know, if you guys want to sit up there and do your jobs, we need them done. You know, I, I, I listen to things on the news, and I'll go take the newspaper any longer, but I need to start, but I remember something that just happened a few years ago. I mean, we've got a lot of activity in our community, that eighteen million dollar project, the RV car. The guy comes in, he's, he's all in the newspaper, on television, and his statements are that he's gone to three different counties day in, Sevier County, day out. He comes to Jefferson County, they accept him with open arms. That project's just supposed to be open, fall twenty-two, it's still not open. You know, then we have, um, the lithium battery project. That one, you know, you talk about it's going to save energy, it's going to bring power to us? It's not. They're going to take out the power at night, and want you to be sure that when it gets down to twenty degrees at night and the power goes out, we won't have power, but they will, because that will be in their guarantee. And then they will sell that power to TBA, which will turn and send it back to us. So, we're not, we're not benefiting from that power plant at all. Then we have the distillery. I don't have an issue with that, but I do know that you guys scrutinize this man. We know for the building and all this. I just want to know if the same things were done about the quarry. Did they come up here before this work, or was it just something that was done in office? You know, um, I watched subdivision, the guy wanted to do the subdivision, I can't remember his name, and you guys were telling me to vote bond, plus he needed up issues. Was this done to the quarry? You know, because I want to know if there was, uh, let me see. If they did a study on what this, this quarry would do to the residents of this community, if the community would have accepted it. The road, you know, they did trucks, hundreds of trucks a day. You know, they said it's dirt. It's not dirt, it's rock. So, I just want to know if they were put through the same scrutiny as the people who are trying to open these subdivisions, or a little store on the corner? Or was it just like I said, just back door, they come into the office, and they were given the privilege to open this? You know, I, I know you guys can't answer, but I appreciate you listening to me. Hopefully, we can get something done with this, because we... And one other thing, can we not get a stop, because they, so they can stop doing the work until we do, go March, till the next meeting in March? Because they, like they said, they are continuing to move, and the longer we wait, the further they get. And the dust that comes off this site, so you guys know, is silica dust, twenty times more deadly than coal dust. It travels in the air further, and it lasts, lingers in the air longer. We're, we're breathing it, the kids at the school are breathing it. So, you know, we would like to have a stop order until this is resolved. Can we do that?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Uh, do we have a Dale Meadows? Where does that come from?
Thank y'all very much for allowing me to be here again. My name is Dale Meadows. I live at three sixty-three Battlefield Drive in Danridge. I got a couple items, and I guess the first one that I want to mention is what seems to be, uh, uncontrolled growth in the county. You know, it seem like we're going at a rate that is unsustainable for the future, and I guess I'm thinking specifically about these. I think the term I've heard is zero lot line houses, where they'll build hundreds of houses and jam them in on a small parcel of land, and you're finding them everywhere. I mean, not just here, but Hamblen County and everywhere else. I don't think, at least in my opinion, the concern is, we don't have the infrastructure to support that and provide the services that's going to be needed for that. And I think that the majority of this is being done by outside investors or developers. They're exploiting the opportunity here in Jefferson County, and when they're done, they're going to be gone, and we're going to be left with the results and the aftermath of what they've done, and have to deal with it at that point. Now, Ms. Loy mentioned a survey. You know, what I'm talking about there doesn't comply with what the results of this survey were that we saw on Tuesday night, and it certainly doesn't conform to the quarry that we got in Piedmont. And again, somebody from outside the county has come in and started this. It was done to the community down there without any warning, any notice, nobody knew what was happening. I remember when, to begin with, you hardly noticed it. I mean, I remember hearing those hydraulic hammers off down into trees and commenting to somebody, "That sounds like a rock quarry down there." But since then, it has grown exponentially. I mean, it's spread everywhere. Pictures right over here attest to that. They're defacing the landscape, he's exploiting our resources, and he's doing this with total disregard for the negative impact that it's having on the community and the residents of the community. I've heard of it, that there's been a lot of effort I think made to avoid coddling the rock quarry. I've heard of rock harvesting, I've heard moving dirt, just like farmers are doing all over the county, or in other places in the county. But you don't have to blast and use dynamite and hydraulic hammers to move dirt, you know, and, uh, well, I, I, the old analogy, and it fits this perfectly, but if it looks like a duck, and it walks like a duck, and it quacks like a duck, it's a duck. This operation down here looks, acts, and sounds like a rock quarry, and to call it anything else is a gross misrepresentation. It has no place in an A1 zoned area or anywhere near a private residence.
Ms. Meadows, I just want to remind you, you're already past your time on that. You can finish up, I just want to remind you.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, you're fine, you're fine. I just wanted to let you know.
But any operator mentioning that to disrupt that operation down there would be unfair to the operator due to the investments he's made, but it's really unfair to the residents that are having to pay the price for that operation and put up with it on a daily basis. And for weeks, people from Piedmont have been coming up here and lining up, complaining, voicing concerns, and what they're really, what they really is, is pleas for help. You know, and the bigger that thing gets, the more urgent those pleas are coming, and I do hope that, that somebody's listening to them, and thank you, and partly for literature.
You're quite all right. Thank you, Mr. Meadows. Do we have a Ms. Lisa Flannery?
Um, my name's Lisa Willak Flan- Flannery, and my address is fifteen fifty-six West Highway twenty-five seventy, Danridge, and that is in the Piedmont community. And I had lots of notes for tonight, but since you guys can't answer questions, I'm going to save these for the next meeting, and I'll probably have more questions, but there's two things that I would like to say. I did a little research about quarry versus, you know, A1 versus agricultural sites, and the only thing that I could find was that if you are working with, on an agricultural site, the only thing you can do is dirt removal. I found this in the Tennessee government website. You can only remove dirt. And I, I understand too that this is not a quarry. Well, can I read you what the definition of a quarry is according to the state of Tennessee? Can I do that? Yes, okay. Quarrying shall be uniformly defined for purposes of all county zoning regulations as the extraction... That's what they're doing, they're extracting rock. Maybe they're not processing the rock, but that's why part of the definition is extracting rock. Extracting, removal, and mechanized processing of stone, gravel, phosphate rock, metallic ore, limestone, marble, church, sand, the mithril stone, and any other solid mineral or substance of commercial value, except coal and deep metal mining. I hope they're not digging for coal on that site. I wouldn't be surprised. It seems like there's a lot of things that we don't know. But I looked on the Jefferson County, in the Jefferson County zoning commission section for Jefferson County, I could not find any definition for what a quarry is, or what constabious quarry, what, how the county feels about it, what their laws are about mining rock. And I spent all afternoon looking for this, could not find it. I finally had to go to the state of Tennessee, and I understand too that the state of Tennessee has been consulted on this project, right? And this right here proves that that should not be there. This, this proves everything that I found, this comes straight from the, straight from the state of Tennessee website. Now, if I could find that, why couldn't you guys find it? And maybe do a little research before you allowed this mess to be built on twenty-five seventy. I have a farm less than a quarter of a mile on twenty-five seventy. It's been in my family since eighteen seventy, and back in the twenties, we had, um, the highway went through our property back in, or in the nineteen twenties, back in the seventies, they extended, uh, Dunblin Valley Road to the highway through our property. That's fine, that, that helps the public. That does not help the public. And I'm going to have a lot more to say when I come back at the end of March, when you have your other meeting, but I suggest that maybe you consult a lawyer or consult somebody in Nashville, which you should have done to begin with. Okay? I've lived in Jefferson County, this is my home, this is where I grew up, and I don't want to see my community destroyed by, I hate, I don't want to say what I'm thinking, but you guys have not done your jobs. And I understand that these positions are appointed, not elected, is that correct? Yeah? Okay.
Ma'am, just letting you know, you're, you're well over your time.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you so much, and I will see you in March.
Thank you, Ms. Flannery. Okay, that concludes the citizens' input. Okay. Thank you. Kim Starr?
Yes.
Okay.
My name is Kim Starr, and I live at one eight one five Ridge Press Drive in Danridge. I attended the long range planning committee that met earlier this week, and my takeaway from the meeting is many Jefferson County residents feel very strongly about the future of our county. Over nineteen hundred responses, highest response rate of any Arcadia's IBI group survey. Ninety percent of the responses want to retain the rural feel of Jefferson County. I also learned it will be the responsibility of the planning and zoning commissioners to follow the direction of the people that live in the county. To date, it sounds like the voices of the residents of Piedmont have been disregarded. In my opinion, that should change. When ninety percent of the respondents feel the same, you have to listen. What the public is realizing is we have to start using our voices to make our wants perfectly clear to those in charge. One of the best things about Jefferson County is neighbors talk to neighbors. We're social, and we like to get to know everyone around us. When I see the results of the survey, we're over nineteen hundred responded. About fifty percent of those respondents have lived in Jeff County for more than twenty years. They have a stake in this county. Eighty percent do not even own agricultural land, but they want it preserved anyways. Thirty percent are retired, are retired, and twenty percent of them had educational, was in an educational profession. That tells me we have a lot of smart people with time on their hands to get involved where necessary. So far, it seems to me, the residents have trusted their mayor and commissioners to do what's right. So far, it seems to me, the residents have trusted their mayor and commissioners to do what's right for Jefferson County. I hope we can continue to trust you, to follow the recommendations from the survey. If not, then all of us, who are the members of the community, who are the landowners, need to get involved to make the changes that we want to have done. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. That concludes the citizens' input. She passed it over to Stephanie, please. Thank you. Moving on to new business. Again, A has been stricken, we'll move on to item B on the agenda. Site plan review for two commercial storage buildings on East Highway 2570, Danridge, by Holly Long and Bart Gore. Do we have anyone here representing that? Good step, Tony?
You have the copy of the site plan. We've already approved two of these buildings. Me and Jordan went up there today, you know, I mean, we didn't see him front by Jordan. Let Jordan speak for them.
Yeah, we want to, site looks appropriate for this use. Don't have the issues with the site plan they presented here. It looks good to me.
Do you have anything you'd like to, like to say, sir?
Yeah, one thing. I really appreciate you guys starting this meeting and opening up with a prayer and a pledge. I think that's awesome, I think it's something that's been forgotten in most places. And I appreciate that pretty much. And that's, that's all I've got to say, as long as this looks good to you guys, we'll be ready to go forward with what we need to do.
Thank you for your kind words. Does anyone have a question? Ms. Long?
You good on drainage?
Yeah, they've got, oh, they're, it's a minimal amount of impervious surface, and it would be ideal to have a letter from an engineer or something like that, but I mean, this is, this is a very minor disturbance here, so I have zero concerns about drainage.
This is our topography pretty flat.
Extremely flat, yeah.
I had a question, Mr. Starr.
Yeah, sure.
On the map, Pop, did you say that we're added, they're adding two buildings to this three acres?
Yeah, the two buildings that you've got, you don't, that was shelved. He's already, he's not shelved.
We have a lot, ten point acres total.
Oh, okay.
We're separating out this three acres right here.
So these are the only two buildings on this three acres?
Yes.
Okay, that was my confusion.
Two's on the other part.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I should have said that.
It's okay, Pop, we don't make mistakes.
Any other questions? Okay, no more questions. Everybody knows what we're looking at here. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'm motion to approve the site plan.
We have proper motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any more discussion? All those in favor, let me know when I'm saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is item number C. Item C, site plan review for industrial building to be constructed at Bruner Road and Highway 11E in Strawberry Plains by Robert Bruner. There's Mr. Bruner here.
This property being rezoned a couple of months ago. He's come in, we cut the two acre track off, and he's got it recorded. And now he's ready for his site plan, and me and Jordan went down and looked at his property again today. And I like Jordan, you're right.
Yeah, it looked good. He's got several natural stormwater detention areas and ditches all around. I had zero, zero concerns about stormwater. Only question I have is, is the disturbance over an acre? Cause if it is, you're supposed to have a storm, a stormwater pollution prevention plan. I can't tell, it looks close to an acre. Man, I know the whole property's two, but you're not disturbing the whole property, it's just... But if it's over an acre, you're supposed to have a stormwater pollution prevention plan, that's, that's for TDEC. Just FYI, that's something they enforce anyhow, but, um... Yeah, other than that, it looks good to me. I don't have an issue with the driveway. Anywhere it is, I think it's far enough away from the intersection, that was another question I had there, but, um... Site plan looks good.
Okay. Do you have anything you'd like to say, Mr. Bruner?
Everything's good to go.
Do we have any questions? Mr. Bruner?
Motion to approve.
I just had one question.
We, we, discussion, since we have motion on the floor?
Uh, give me a second, motion person.
You can, yes, sir. Okay, we have a motion, second now, discussion.
Uh, Jordan, so the TDEC thing, that has nothing to do with this body?
No, it's just for his gravation, you know.
Okay. Any more discussion? Okay. Everybody understands who we're voting on? All those in favor, let me know when I'm saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes.
Thank you much.
Thank you, Mr. Bruner. Okay, D is stricken, we are to E, discussion of the land use plan, possible rezoning of Jefferson County.
Well, there's a place of maps on here. Four quadrants here, we split the county up into four quadrants that we talked about for basic land use and for existing zoning. But we just take a look here. Let's see here. There should be four different quadrants here.
I don't know if we have the ability tonight to do that, it would be nice, and we have discussed, maybe projecting it at some point in time. We don't have the technology to do that right now. Yeah, and we're, we're just starting the discussion of it, you're more than welcome to stay and listen and stuff, but it'd be kind of hard for us to let everybody fall through and see what we have here tonight. Hopefully we can work toward that, ma'am.
Let's do it one at a time. We got four different quadrants here, so this, this is the first one, steady, this is called steady area three. But this is the existing land use here, this is what it is now.
This is what it is now for this quad right here.
This is, okay, this is up in the... The existing quad here. All right, so... God, I'm going to touch on things. There we go.
Yep. So I mean, I think first thing to look at is see what, what jumped out at us and, you know...
Did we not have these displayed on the screen in the back before? Is that a, I don't know anything about tech, but is that a possibility?
I would think we could put PDF, uh...
Now that you've got the quadrant?
I would think we could put PDFs up, up on there.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Well, I don't have, I mean, somebody has to send them to us.
Yeah, we can send, if we can put them up.
Send them to Mike, we'll get them to Mike.
Okay.
We haven't got them yet.
I apologize, I, you know, I thought that, um, I thought we did, but that must have been...
We had them, the start, before we started, but we didn't, you knocked every cent of the other stuff. I was saying, we just had the whole thing, had the whole fun.
Had the whole one map, yeah.
Just all one map at one time, but didn't have the overlay done.
How, how clear will that be?
What, what kind of...
How, how can pull the file?
I mean, it, it'll be clear enough to, for them to follow along.
Okay.
You know, at least somewhat, I mean, it'd be about as clear as we're looking at it now, if that is as big as it looks.
I think it's probably bigger than this.
We, we certainly have them, we certainly have PDFs, so we can give them to us.
So that's no problem for you, Mike.
Well, the thing is, everybody had to turn around backwards to see it.
Yeah.
All the TVs are going to be a lot smaller though.
Yeah, you, I don't know, I don't see it, but that's all we got.
I think there's going to be a comfortable way to look.
No, there's not. This is at least a small enough scale to be able to, to look at, you know, and see what's going on. The land use is a lot busier than the zoning, zoning's easy to look at. You got big swaths of rural residential, A1 is the vast majority of it. Uh, you got a little bit of industrial. And then you look at the existing land use, of course, White Pine is, has its own zoning, and Jefferson City has its own zoning, Danridge has its own zoning, in terms of the county.
Piedmont really needs its own zoning.
Well, Piedmont to incorporate, they could.
True.
I've got another technical question. If we had it projected on the screen, would you have the ability to highlight certain zones?
Question, the lady.
Should be able to, at least.
I mean, you can, if it's a PDF, you can zoom in to different sections of the PDF.
Yeah, okay.
I just thought if we change colors, we don't know what we're looking at.
That would be up to that file that they sent.
I don't know anything about this stuff.
If they, if y'all can put together the overlays on this thing, I mean, you can project anything you want on top of it.
I don't think that, I talked to Emily about that, and I don't think we can do that. She, she, she taught, she has a lot of ideas and it's possible, but from what I gathered, it's...
Pardon me, Jordan, hey, guys, if you all can, please keep down the conversation, that way we can concentrate, it's distracting. If you need to carry on conversation, y'all more than welcome to step out in the hallway. But, but if you want to stay, please respect us for what we're trying to do. Ma'am, this is the first time we've seen them.
Turn your mic size.
Well, now, we're, we're discussing right now how to make it viewable for, for everybody.
Yeah.
Get your bits and pieces and that's it.
Do we want to do it next month, or?
I, I'll entertain a motion to put this off next month.
Mr. Chairman, I'm motion to move this to the March meeting.
Proper motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All those, any discussion on that motion?
Would just, would, just what we talked about with the technical stuff, whatever's possible.
Right.
I mean...
We can put PDFs, I'm, I'm certain we have PDFs, so if we can put them up, we'll put them up.
Fair enough. Any more discussion on that?
Well, I'd just like to say one, well, it was brought up that nothing had been done on this, and I, I don't know that there's been a month go by that we either hadn't talked about the availability of the maps, what we were doing on it with Jordan, where his people were, or whatever. So it's not been like we've not done anything on this.
It's not been two years, it's not been two years. Not even one.
So what we've done is we've been working towards getting the stuff done. But it is, there is some logistical issues that we had to solve, and we can't proceed just like tonight.
Can everyone hear Mr. Starr, what he's saying? No?
What I was saying is, as far as this, it's just like tonight. There is some logistical issues if, if you all want to look at this. And there's also been the same logistical issues, we've kept it on the agenda so we would be ready because we are required to publish that that's going to be discussed. So you all would know that it was going to be discussed, or there's possibility. So if we get here, and Jordan's folks didn't have the map and stuff, and we can't proceed that month, then it's not that we're not doing anything. But there are logistical issues, just like tonight. He's, they finally got the maps, but we don't have the file to project them. So if we want to wait till that, then that's another month. So the delays that's come about on this has not been from inaction. It's been of getting the stuff together to get to it.
Thank you, John. Any further discussion? Yeah, all those in favor, postpone it to next month, let, let me know when I'm saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes, looking for motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Under other business?
Yes, sir.
Um, can we add the discussion of the long range survey to the March meeting?
Yeah, I think it would be... Is it going to be done? I mean, are they going to be done with it?
Because... So it'll be done, but we won't approve it until April. But they have, I mean, you saw citizens bring the handout.
I understand, but until it's approved or until it's taken action and finalized?
I think we can still discuss it, though. I just was going to hand out the handout they had Tuesday night to everybody, and if, if nobody, if there's no discussion...
Actually, I want it to be on the agenda, isn't it?
Well, but people might want to come up, does it need to be on the agenda for citizens to talk about? Or are you entertaining citizens' comments on any new zoning related?
They can talk about.
Citizens' comments, they can speak on anything.
As, as they did tonight, even some of the ones who had a certain thing, ladies just spoke about other things tonight. So you can write the handout if you want to.
Okay.
You can, I mean, you can put it on agenda and share the results if you want to.
I'd like...
Citizens can talk about it, but...
I'd like it on the agenda, that way it's advertised, that if anybody wants to come talk about that in particular, they can, it'll be advertised in the paper, they can come talk about it. I don't think we have to get into a two hour conversation about it, though.
Absolutely.
Unless you just want to.
I would get it, peace with it if, if, you know, y'all are, man, but we can't take any action, we can't do anything.
Yeah, I understand.
We really probably don't need to be talking about it a whole lot until it's finalized and proven.
I understand, I just want it in front of all, I think it should be in front of all of us.
Yeah.
You need that up in a motion, or just?
Just bring it.
Okay.
I think we'll get it. Any other bits?
I'll give you a motion to adjourn if you want. Mr. Chairman?
I have a motion, we have a second. I'll take that as.
Okay. Second.
Okay, all those in favor, please rise.
Right there, overtime.